Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone to our special call board meeting. As you may remember, this year the board inserted a few extra meetings. Just because we've gotten so large, it's really hard for us to accomplish everything with one meeting a month. And so, we are, we've inserted some board meetings, and this is one of our inserted board meetings. And we are pleased to see all of your bright smiling faces at this special call board meeting. Do I hear a motion to adjourn executive session and begin open session?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Green. Thank you, Dr. Powers. Is there any discussion or comments, board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. The motion carries, and it is unanimous. I'd like to call to order the general session, and I'd like to notify you that we are in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. We also would like to notify you that we are taping this meeting, and that the, we are taping the meeting to, for accuracy and preparing the minutes, and we are in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act by notifying the media of the date, time, and place of the meeting. At this time, I'd like to call on Dr. Guyton for our invocation. Dr. Guyton?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, a prayer of thanksgiving today, Lord. First, thanksgiving for the children of this community, the children that you have entrusted us with as parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, foster care parents, whoever it may be that you have charged, we thank you. Secondly, for the staff, the teachers, the administrators, the, anyone who touches and impacts the life of a child that comes through Lexington One School, we thank you. Thirdly, for the parents and the, the community at large, Lord, those who came before us to create just this wonderful community that we get to live and serve in, Lord. And lastly, Lord, for all the people seated to my right, those with a servant heart that is solely after the care of children, of your children, and we thank you for that. Lord, we're faced with many decisions, some easy, some difficult, but, but ultimately, they're, they're decisions of abundance. You have provided to us just an abundant nature of resources, and we, we thank you that you have entrusted us with the management of that. And we ask that we do so very well, and we do so exceptionally. You are a rock and our redeemer. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Guyton. That was a lovely prayer. Board, item 5.0 is approval of the agenda. You have the agenda before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion regarding the agenda? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. Board, in front of you, 6.0 are reports and action items from executive session. Tonight, we heard employment recommendations for the 2018-2019 school year. Do I hear a motion to approve four certified recommendations for the 2018-2019 academic year?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the four certified positions as recommended by the administrative team for the 2018-2019 academic year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Are there any questions or comments regarding these four certified recommendations? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. Board, in front of you, you have the employment recommendations for the 2019-2020 school year. Do I hear a motion to approve 23 certified recommendations for the 2019-2020 academic year?
Madam Chair, I move that the board accept the recommendations of the administrative team for 23 certified employment recommendations for the 2019-2020 academic year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Green. Are there any questions or comments regarding the 23 certified recommendations for the 2019-2020 school year?
So, I have a comment. I just wanted to thank the administrative team. We had a teacher's fair at Lexington High School. It was, I attended as a board member, just observing. Very well-run, a lot of excitement in the room. I enjoyed, you know, visiting with prospective teachers. I mean, it's, it's kind of exciting time in people's lives, and, and obviously, the dividends paid off. So, thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you, and I will tell you all, we are going to have a second on April 23rd. Okay. Oh, that's, well, we, thank you, and, and please thank them. They gave up their Saturday to do that, and I heard it was absolutely wonderful. And you said, this is some of the largest numbers you've ever brought forth this early. So, thank you for getting those great hires.
Well, and it's, it's hard to deliver on instruction without teachers, so, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, board? We'll take a vote. All in favor of approving the 25 certified recommendations for 2019-2020, please say aye.
Twenty-three certified.
Twenty-three, I'm sorry. Twenty-three certified. Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. Thank you, board. Okay, at this time, we'll go to a property contractual matter related to the purchase of future school sites for the following schools. A new town of Lexington area elementary school, a new White Knoll area elementary school, and the relocation of Lexington Middle School. Do I hear a motion regarding a property matter related to the purchase of future school sites?
Madam Chair, I move that the board grant the administration approval to negotiate for the purchase of the most advantageous sites for the following schools. New Town of Lexington area elementary school, a new White Knoll area elementary school, and the relocation of Lexington Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. At this time, I would like to point out to the board and the members of the audience that Dr. Kyle Guyton has recused himself from the deliberations regarding the Lexington area elementary school future sites and the relocation of Lexington Middle School. I think there's, are you just doing the one? You recuse yourself on the one.
Yes, ma'am. I recuse myself from the Lexington Middle School discussion, and since this vote is for a package vote, then I will, I will not be voting in this.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, Dr. Guyton. Are there any questions or comments regarding the negotiations for these three properties? Mr. Salters, would you like to give us an update on this?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Just, we were excited about the opportunity to, should this motion pass, to begin our work to negotiate for sites, for these school locations, as you are aware. These were approved in the 2018 bond referendum, and they're part of our building plan, and the Lexington relocation of Lexington Middle School, that school is scheduled to open in two years, and it's, you know, roughly an 18-month to two-year construction timeframe. So, if you factor everything in, so we're really interested in getting moving on that. And the White Knoll area elementary school is the furthest one out, but we, we would like to go ahead and secure that property, and the Town of Lexington area elementary school kind of fits in between those two. We would also like to go ahead and secure that as well.
Great, thank you. Board, any questions or comments for Dr. Powers?
And, just to clarify, so this motion and vote essentially gives the district and the administrative team the authority to enter into an option agreement that would be brought back to us as a board, correct?
That's correct, Dr. Powers.
Okay. And then, we would do a due diligence and have time for feedback during that period?
Yes, sir. We typically have 120-day to 150-day due diligence period, so, once an option is entered into, you have that period of time for feedback. Yes, sir.
But just to clarify, after the 120 days, it doesn't come back to a vote for the board again?
Once the board approves the option and all the criteria within the option, including the price based on appraisals, it would not come back to the board for action after that.
Anything else?
And that's, Ms. Garrett, I would just add, that's following our, our district procurement code.
Well, I'm just concerned that we changed the procurement code, because originally, we obtained an appraisal for the most advantageous sites, but then tonight, we were told that we're going to get approval before we get an appraisal.
We're following page 53. It's actually section 20 of the, of the district's procurement guidelines in our process, and that hasn't changed in a number of years.
And at any point in the due diligence process, if there's anything of concern or problem or community feedback that we're made aware of, that makes the site undesirable, we can vote to rescind the option agreement. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. You, the option is written so that the board at any point can leave the option.
I just have another comment. I'm looking at the same thing you're looking at, and under procurement, real property, acquisition and disposal, under C, it says we'll obtain an appraisal, and then D says we will report the results and ask for approval from the board, but we're, we have flip-flopped those.
I'm interpreting that differently than you. I apologize, but that's, that's the process that we're following.
So, do we have appraisals yet?
No, ma'am, we don't have appraisals yet. We would do that as part of the option. We typically wouldn't do an appraisal on someone's property that we haven't talked to them about purchasing.
Right, but you're obtaining board approval to negotiate for the purchase.
As part of that negotiation, there would be an appraisal done.
I'm just concerned that if there is community feedback, then we have to take action to rescind our decision, instead of moving forward with the process and then seeking board approval to move forward, instead of rescinding a decision. I would like to have a vote at the end where we say, okay, we've got the community's feedback, now we vote to move forward with this.
Mr. Salters, could you compare this to how the process has been done previously to give us an idea of when the due diligence and the board approval took place prior to this current procedure?
Sure. There typically have been two procedures followed in, in the state as it, as it relates to districts acquiring property. The first procedure is one that we followed for many, many years in this district, and that is where the board takes action at the end of the due diligence period. So, the option agreement, the, any, any appraisal should they be chosen to do. So, all of that due diligence work is done in, in private, if you will, and so, in confidence. So, the seller and the district, the buyer, no one discloses that information, and so for that 120-day period of time, that is all kept confidential. And then, at the end, once the office of school facilities approves the site, once SEDOT approves the site, and we're satisfied that all of our due diligence is met, we bring a motion to the board to close the property. At that point, that's the first time that the public would be aware of a, of said site being purchased. And in this case, the other way that it can be done is what, what we're attempting to do tonight, and that is where you inform the community that you're going to enter into negotiations for the most advantageous sites. You do those negotiations, you bring options back to the board for action, and then, the community is made aware in the beginning of that process. And so, then, the community has 120 days to 150 days, depending on the due diligence period, to react and offer comment through the process. And so, then, at that point, if there was some issue either with the community feedback or with the actual property, the board could walk away from the option. That's why it's considered an option.
So, when you bring it to us for, again, when you, you know, press, the advantageous property is identified, and you get the option agreement, you'll bring that to us, and then, at that point in time, when we approve it, then that launches the due diligence process. Is that correct?
That's correct. And then, and of course, when we bring you the option, the option will include the tax map numbers of the property, and so, it will become public record at that point as to which property is, is being identified for potential purchase, so the community is aware of it at that point.
So, the transparency begins at the beginning of the negotiation?
It begins 120 to 150 days earlier, where you still have an out with the option agreement versus at the end, when you're taking action to move to close. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Mr. Salters, just for the record, how long have we done it this way?
Since before my time, and I've been here 23 years.
Thank you.
Board, any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. Let me get back where I was. So, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. All in favor of the motion as presented by Mr. Oswald, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I'm sorry?
Nay, I'm opposed.
You said no?
No, I'm opposed.
Okay, so we have six ayes and one opposed, so six to one is the vote. Please record that. Okay?
Madam Chair, I did not vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, but thank you. We had one recusal, so five ayes and one opposed. Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Guyton. Okay, at this point in time, we are going to go to the architectural selection contractual matter. I have recused myself on this one because, for two of the contracts. Therefore, I'm going to turn over this portion of the agenda to our vice chair, Ms. Anne Marie Green. Do I hear a motion regarding the architectural selection contractual matter?
Madam Vice Chair, I move that the board approve the recommendation of the administration to award architectural services contracts to the following firms.
JHS Architecture, 1812 Lincoln Street, Columbia, South Carolina, 29201. The project work is Lake Murray Elementary, Midway Elementary, Red Bank Elementary, Lexington High, Lexington Technology Center, and Maintenance Facility. Jumper Carter Sees Architects at 412 Meeting Street, West Columbia, South Carolina, 29169. Project work is Pleasant Hill Elementary, Pleasant Hill Middle, Gilbert High, Riverbluff High. LS3P Associates Limited, 701 Lady Street, Suite A, Columbia, South Carolina, 29201. Project work is Carolina Springs Elementary, Meadow Glen Elementary, Oak Grove Elementary, Carolina Springs Middle, Meadow Glen Middle, and Rosenwall Community Learning Center. McMillan-Paston Smith Architecture, 400 Augusta Street, Suite 200, Greenville, South Carolina, 29601. Project work is Deerfield Elementary, Rocky Creek Elementary, White Knoll Elementary, White Knoll Middle, White Knoll High, Safety and Security at All Schools. Pinnacle Architecture, 701 East Bay Street, Suite 302, Charleston, South Carolina, 29403. Project work, Forts Pond Elementary, Pillion Elementary, Satzagatha Elementary, Lexington Middle, Pillion Middle, Pillion High, and Transportation Facility. Quackenbush Architects, 1217 Hampton Street, Columbia, South Carolina, 29201. Project work, Gilbert Elementary, Gilbert Primary, Lexington Elementary, New Providence Elementary, and Gilbert Middle.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
It's coming out of committee. It doesn't need a second.
That's correct. That, that recommendation was placed forward by the committee. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to thank the three of you that spent time working through this. A big thank you. And I guess, Mr. Salters, if you kind of detail the scope of this work for the, for the record, I think we need to spend a little time talking about that.
Yes, sir, Dr. Powers, thank you. This work is the work that was approved by our voters in the 2018 bond referendum. It's the work associated with the 2018 building plan renovation and addition efforts, and it touches basically all the schools in the district in some form or fashion. And the, the architectural selection team comprised of the three board members mentioned, Mr. Oswald, Mr. Anderson, Ms. Green, were also assisted by myself and three other district staff to go through the process of selecting these firms. So, I'm pleased to offer this to you tonight to get this work started.
But, but the work to get here was 20 hours, 30 hours, we all as board members, and I'm sure?
It's probably more than that.
Okay.
I mean, we had a number of proposals to review prior to coming together to score them, and then interviews and so forth. It's a lot of work.
It is exciting that we're here. You know, we, we got the bond referendum passed, and the work is before us, and we've, we've got the people in place and ready to get going.
We've got really good feedback so far. If I could just add, on our, our, our building plan page, we've got our, all of our building projects scheduled with the help of our communications office. If you go to About and then Building Plan, the whole schedule's out there. You've got pictures in each individual project, and it's, we've got some folks very closely watching that. We are, have stated that we're in the design phase beginning in February, and I've already gotten phone calls, where's the architect? Why aren't they at my school yet? I'm ready to, to start design. And so, we're excited, hopefully, to be able to get those folks out there within the next few weeks, should we be able to move forward.
And one thing I would like to mention, as part of the review and selection process, we did play, pay close attention to the location of the firms that we were talking to, to make sure that they had a true South Carolina presence, because we really want to keep our, our community's dollars in South Carolina.
And my understanding is that you also took into account firms that were familiar with some of our schools in our district to help save on costs, because, you know, obviously, they know us, and they've done good work, and we have experience with them. So, again, thank you, ma'am.
Any other discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion as presented by Mr. Anderson, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, six to nothing, please. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Ms. Green, and I, again, just want to say thank you to Mr. Oswald, Ms. Green, and Mr. Anderson. That was a ton of time they spent doing those interviews and conducting that work for the district, so we really appreciate them representing the board. I want to take a point of privilege before we move to the next section, and I would like to recognize Mr. Stuart Nichols. Is Mr. Nichols here? There, there he is. We want to welcome Stuart. He is from Troop 307 with the Boy Scouts, and he is in the Saxagatha Troop. And what are you working on, Stuart? Well, great, well, welcome, and, and I think, were you an Eagle Scout, Dr. Little?
I believe Eagle Scouts say there are always an Eagle Scout. Yes, ma'am.
And I think Mr. Gallagher was an Eagle Scout?
He is an Alpha Eagle Scout.
Is there anyone here else that's an Eagle Scout that would like to wish Stuart well? Well, anyway, we are glad to have you, Stuart, and thank you, and if you need a signature or anything, just come up to the meeting afterwards, we'll be glad to have you. But let's welcome him. Okay, at this time, we're going to go to 7.0, which is citizens' participation, and I do have several cards here. And I, I think every card is in reference to the rezoning, and I would like to remind all the people that are here that the second reading of the attendance line and the zoning will be at our main meeting, which is February 19th. And so, tonight, this is a special call board meeting, and we will not be discussing zoning tonight, but this is your time to talk to us, and we do want to hear from you. So, I'm going to read these guidelines, and then I'll call on you one, one-on-one, and you'll each have three minutes to address us. So, the Lexington County School District One Board of Trustees provides a time for citizens' participation at each regular board meeting. There are a few guidelines. First, in order to speak, you must be a parent or a legal guardian of a student in Lexington County School District One or a resident and taxpayer of the district. Second, each speaker has three minutes. Third, you may comment on an agenda item, school operations, programs, policies, or other matters of concern. However, you may not speak about specific individuals, whether they're students or staff. There are other ways to bring those situations to the board's attention. We want to give everyone who came here tonight to speak the opportunity to speak. For that reason, board members will not reply to your individual remarks. This is your time to talk to us, because we do a lot of talking up here, and we want to hear from you. And if someone makes the point or points you came to make before you, if you could just state that you agree with the previous speakers and not restate every point, that will also help us on time. We also ask you not to clap or make comments, either while an individual is speaking or after a speaker finishes, as that slows down the process. If you wanted to speak tonight, we ask that you fill out a card with your name and address for our records. These cards were on the sign-in table. Is there anyone else who wants to speak that did not fill out a card? Because we can give you one now. Okay, great. Let's see, Mary Beth has the cards, if we need those extra. As stated earlier, you should not expect us to reply to your remarks. Although we may ask you a question, as a board, we will not take any action or respond tonight in response to actions, issues you raised during citizens' participation. And again, I'd like to reiterate that that will, we will be addressing zoning, because we did publish that at our February 19th meeting, so just to make sure you understand that. So, at this time, I'm going to call up Brian Potte. Brian is going to discuss middle school attendance lines. He lives at 200 Shoal Creek Drive, and he is the parent of children at Riverbluff, Meadow Glen Middle, and Meadow Glen Elementary. Go ahead, Mr. Potte.
That's right. I got one at each school.
Yeah.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk. I spoke the other night at one of the meetings, and I just wanted to reiterate that, that we know that's a hard job to, to rezon everybody, and there's going to be people who aren't happy, but the, in the Shoal Creek neighborhood and other neighborhoods, traffic on Mineral Springs is already pretty bad. Mineral Springs is, on the new rezoning, is one of the borders. Neighborhoods on the other side of Mineral Springs, who we carpool with, they share buses with, all that, they're now going to be split up and going to different schools. I think that's a mistake, partly because it's going to add multiple sets of buses, multiple sets of cars going different ways. One of the other issues I have is, I don't know if any of you guys live on Mineral Springs Road, but I can tell you that if you try to make a left on the 378 during moderate traffic, it can be considerable. It's a challenge, and so now, we're going to have to go through that every morning, and that's one of the things I, I would hope that you guys would take into consideration when you are looking at the finalized plan, to see if there's any way to do that. Another one is, and I speak for a lot of people in my neighborhood and other neighborhoods around, if you have multiple children, as I do, at each of the schools, you drop your child off at the elementary school, drive right by the middle school to get back into Lexington traffic and drive through Lexington to drop them off at Lexington Middle School, which I think is, most people would agree, is kind of an unreasonable request for parents. And again, I just want to thank you, and Dr. Salters especially, for heading this up, and, you know, I know, I know that I have emotional reasons that I'd like for my children to stay at, at Meadow Glen, but I'm not going to share it with you, because I know that, you know, everybody does at their schools. I've nothing, I've heard nothing but good things about Lexington Middle, and if my children go there, great, you know, I'll be happy with it, but I think on a practical matter of being able to, you know, kind of focus on the traffic patterns in Lexington, I think it, it would benefit all of Mineral Springs Road area if all of those neighborhoods went to the same schools. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Potte. We appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us. At this time, I'd like to call up Jason Hinton. He lives at 140 Shoal Creek Circle, and he has a child at Meadow Glen Elementary, and he's going to discuss rezoning as well.
Yeah, I'm Jason, I'm like I said, Meadow Glen. I also live in the same neighborhood that Mr. Potte lives in, and I'd like to...
Would you mind pulling up just a little bit, because we are recording you?
All right. I do agree with what he said about traffic and so forth and the community issues. I just want to reiterate that. A couple of things I had, you know, same thing with community situations, considerations, you know, we've got children at Meadow Glen Elementary right now, they're going to go to, they think they're going to go to Meadow Glen Middle School at some point. We've got three kids, so we're going to be Meadow Glen Elementary, then back to Lexington Middle, and it's, it gets messy. One thing with our, with our, sorry about that. One thing with our kids, we've got the curriculum changes. We, we came out of Northside Christian as, as, that was our daycare for everybody, and our daughter, I mean, she's doing fantastic with the expeditionary learning. I mean, she's, she's doing great with it. She's come out of her shell.
Oh, good.
We fear change a little bit, just because we're normal, and that's, that's a little bit scary for us. Immersion impacts, I don't have immersion program people, but I'm on the HOA, so I want to speak a little bit for Shoal Creek, and there are people in there, they're in, currently in the immersion program, and they're going to lose access to transportation, and that's a significant concern for some of those people. Same thing with some people over in Orchard Point. We've got friends over there, and there, there's actually some people there, they We've got friends over there and there's actually some people there that have no other transportation. They work and they're going to lose that. But anyway, those are the three points I had. I appreciate your time.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hinton. We appreciate you sharing those thoughts with us. At this time, I'd like to call up Ms. Amy Quinn. She's going to discuss the immersion program and rezoning and she lives at 115 John Preston Drive and she has a child at Midway. Ms. Quinn?
Thank you. I joined back in the immersion program in 2013 and at Midway at that time, the immersion program wasn't actually thriving as much as it had in the past. There was some turnover with teachers and some issues with the program. And I was convinced to put my second child back into immersion and I'm glad I did. I mean, he's done very well. He's in fifth grade now. It's been a very long and tedious process. We were told you don't need to know any French to put your kid into this program and that it wouldn't be a problem. And I'd say not exactly. It wasn't so much that. But it takes a lot of hours and a lot of time spent trying to make sure that your kid is learning the basics that you need to learn while doing that language. I've gone so far as making a spreadsheet, taking every single handout he had in French, making a spreadsheet of every word in French and the translation in English and a link to the pronunciation because we couldn't figure out what anything was about. So it's a lot that we've invested in order to get into the program. I've got a stack of materials here that we were given that asked us to make a commitment to the program and told us that we'd need to suffer through elementary because where the real benefits were going to come, were going to come through middle school and the credits that they were going to be able to get. And at this point, I don't feel like that commitment is being honored. And so that's something that I have a problem with. It's not, I understand that they can continue to go and go without the transportation, but the transportation is not just an inconvenience. It's, to me, it's an equity issue. You've got parents who have both parents working who cannot do it. You have parents who are working multiple jobs who are dependent upon that transportation. And every child that comes out of that program, it hurts the program. And so I would ask that y'all honor the same commitment that you ask for us as parents and as our students to make. Also, just wanted to mention that right now we're looking at rezoning our neighborhood in Kenwood and our neighborhood's going to be, or there will be, not necessarily our neighborhood, but there will be rezoning again done as soon as the new middle school opens. So we think one option would be to wait on that rezoning, otherwise to provide transportation for our children. See if there's anything else. You know, one of the neighbors mentioned, you know, noticing that the bus passes right past our neighborhood. So this idea of using roads as a natural boundary doesn't really make a whole lot of sense when you, if you don't consider the neighborhoods that all come off of that same road. And then as a final point, to Ms. Garrus's point, I appreciate you standing up on that issue on the appraisal. I think that's very important and I think that when, we've heard how tight the timeline is on building this school and if something isn't, doesn't match up, by the time the public knows about it and has any chance to do anything about it or be heard on it, it's going to be too late. There won't be a time to go look for another piece of property. So it's an illusion of there being transparency. And I did want to thank Dr. Little. Thank y'all did a great job.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Quinn. Okay, and finally, last but not least, we have Christina Emerson. She's going to discuss the rezoning at Meadow Glen and she lives at 203 Shoal Creek Drive and she has children at Meadow Glen Elementary and Meadow Glen Middle. Okay, Ms. Emerson?
Good evening and thank you for hearing from all of us today. I think that I'd be wasting time to reiterate what my Shoal Creek neighbors have said, but I do want to reiterate that. It makes little sense for us to drop our daughter off at Meadow Glen Elementary and drive past the school to take my son to another school. It's just the practicality of it. It doesn't really work for our family. We are a two working parent household. We need the buses. And so for my son, who is going into eighth grade at Meadow Glen Middle, he's grandfathered in, which is wonderful, but at the same time, we need that transportation for him to get home, otherwise we won't be able to continue to attend Meadow Glen. But I appreciate you listening to us and I will leave the great comments to my neighbors that have spoken before me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emerson. And as we've stated before, the board is very open to hearing from the community. This is my 14th rezoning and I can tell you, in the 14 rezonings I've done, we have never once passed the first draft because we truly listen to the community, we hear what you have to say, and we do take everything that you bring to our attention into account. So I just want to assure you, that was truly a first draft and the board is making every effort to meet the needs of the community. Okay, we are now going on to our 8.0, which is action items. I'm going to take another point of privilege. Normally, we do a lot of, we recognize students and teachers and community members and we let people leave. This meeting is a little different and if you feel you need to leave, please feel free to leave. You don't have to stay with us unless, I mean, we would love for you to, but I don't want people to feel like they're locked into their seats because we do have a little bit more business to attend to. So at this point, we're going to go to item 8.1, which is a resolution approving issuance of referendum bonds. Do I hear a motion to approve a resolution approving the issuance of referendum bonds as presented? And it has not been presented yet? So normally, we put the motion on the floor, we do the second, then we have the presentation. So let's go in that order. Do I hear a motion to approve? That's not right. I'm thinking out loud here. We've got this worded a little funny. Let's go ahead and have the resolution presented. Then we'll see if the board wants to approve it. How about that? So, yep, that's not quite right in terms of Robert's Rules of Order, but we're going to, we'll do it the way it makes sense. So at this time, I'm going to call on Mr. Butler to lead us in this and he'll introduce Mr. Theo DeBose and Mr. Mike Gallagher to discuss the rationales and answer questions.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Little. Yeah, this resolution is a result of the bond referendum that the citizens of Lexington School District want to approve back in November. And it's actually to provide for the issuance and sale of a combination of general obligation bonds and bond anticipation notes not to exceed 365 million. So for more detail into the complexities of it, I will first turn it over to Theo DeBose. He's a very well-known and very well-respected bond attorney across the state and he represents Haynesworth-Sinkler and Board.
Hello, members of the Board. It's great to be in front of you. Again, my name's Theo DeBose with Haynesworth-Sinkler-Boyd. Privileges to serve as bond counsel to the district. We've got two things to present to you tonight. First is this resolution and then the financing plan that this resolution allows the school district to execute. I'll stick to the resolution, Mr. Gallagher, to present the financing plan. The resolution authorizes, as you'll hear over a course of years, the bonds issued authorized in the referendum. And they are authorized to be issued for the purposes that were approved in the referendum and no others. Okay, so this is a very discreet piece of legislation here. Just a little bit of an aside, bonds are simply the way that governments borrow money. They're loans. The difference between this loan and the loan you may have on your car or on your house is that there are many lenders. This is a lot of money and a few folks that you hear about in the news from time to time aside, not many lenders want to be the sole creditor of any government in the United States. So what happens is this 365 million dollars, when all is said and done, is broken up into relatively small pieces, as small as $5,000. And they're sold literally all over the world, mostly in the United States. Why would someone want to do this? Well, a couple of reasons. They offer tax-exempt interest, okay? It's an unusually stable investment. This district is rated AA1, which is right next to the AAA rating. I mean, both investment-
Can I say we are very proud of that?
Yes.
And it helps the lower interest rate.
It does. The better your rating, the lower your interest rate. And let me just say, for Mr. Butler's behalf-
Can I interrupt you just a second? Can we get the mic up? You're going to have to eat the microphone a little bit so everybody can hear in the back.
You want me to eat it? Okay. All right. Thank you. Then that rating is the result of lots of hard work and commitment both by the board and your finance staff over a number of years to get the rating up to where you enjoy those very competitive interest rates. The bond process involves the district going into the market, Wall Street, so you become an actor on Wall Street. And an underwriting firm will buy your bonds each time they're issued in a competitive sealed bid process. Note, the sealed bid is the internet now and there's a clearinghouse that controls all this. But it's a competitive process. The bonds can only be sold to the investment bank that offers the best interest rate to the district. How do we go into the market? We prepare an offering document called an official statement. It consists of your audited financial statements as well as some demographic data about the county and your district and then tax collection rates. We identify your largest taxpayers. And it gives both the rating agencies and the investors an idea of where you've been and where it looks like you're going. That prospectus or our official statement is the basis for the rating. We expect it to stay the same. And then on the given day, the sealed bids are received. Mr. Gallagher's firm makes the calculation of what's the lowest cost. And then a couple of weeks later, we have something called a closing. And a closing is, in the simplest terms, where you get the money and the investors get their bonds. And because it's the 21st century, they actually don't get anything. The bonds are bits of data in a computer in Queens, New York City. All they get is a confirmation slip from their broker that says, "You own this." And just like US currency, everybody so far believes it. "Yeah, I own this bond." Actually, there's only one bond for each year and it sits at a vault at a bank somewhere, a bank that you've engaged to be your paying agent. So that is the process. What else do you have to do? This document says you're going to issue the bonds, you're going to put on taxes every year. And once the bonds are issued, it's really the duty of the auditor and treasurer of this county to put on enough millage to pay the bonds, to collect those taxes, which you've got a sales tax that you collect that ameliorates the impact of the debt service on these bonds. And then to pay your bondholders every six months. And that's the United States' custom to make payments every six months. You also have the right, for each time you issue bonds, to pay them off early. We did that last week. I don't know if you all are informed, but the district saved about $7 million, I think, by paying some bonds off early, refinancing like you may have done with your house. You reserve that right. And you make some covenants about how you're going to spend the money. And the answer to those covenants is, we're going to spend the money on the projects approved in the referendum. So that's it. The way people in the public can understand what's going on is there's a notice of sale published in the state paper generally. These documents are available on Mr. Gallagher's website when it's time to go into the market. So the market knows this is happening. Then the bonds are sold and we give that information back to the administration and they can give it to you. If you have someone interested in becoming an investor in the district, remember, you're on Wall Street, so you can become an investor in the district. And the way you do that is you talk to one of the brokerage firms that's active in this market. Because it's a competitive process, your brokerage firm may not win. But these bonds get traded all the time. The municipal bond market used to be fairly static and people would hold bonds until they were paid off. No longer. There's actually a website where anybody on the public can go, and I'll give Dr. Little the address, and see what bonds of this school district are being traded every day actively, just like stocks. So if you have a member of the community that asks you if they want to invest, we can tell them how you go about doing that. This resolution authorizes the administration working with Mr. Gallagher's firm and your finance staff, your building staff, to determine what's the optimal time for splitting up this 365 million dollars. Both for practical reasons, because the way tax-exempt bonds and the market works right now, if you borrowed all of this money today, you would be paying interest at this level, but it would be invested at a lower level. And that's just the reality of the market where we are today. That's not very efficient. You're not going to need all this money upfront. So it will be parceled out. Mr. Gallagher will tell you more about the plan his firm has for splitting this up. But of course, going into the market, the results in the market is all public information and freely available. I won't belabor any of this, but I'm glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Board, do we have any questions for Mr. DeBose?
I have a question. Do you have a copy of the presentation that was given to the board?
The resolution?
Yeah, the resolution.
I've got this, ma'am.
Okay. I'm looking at Exhibit B, about the fourth line down on Page B1.
Yeah, John pointed that out to me earlier today. This form is one we have recently put into play. So that will need to read town of Lexington when we actually issue the bond.
Can you talk a little bit about the fees associated with the service? Is that included within the referendum itself or are those funds outside within our operating? And that may not be a best question for you, but just general fee structure on how this is established?
They're all handled as part of the issuance and I think when this program was put together, the usual cost of issuance they called, or called were built into the calculations of how much money you need. My firm and I think all of my colleagues in this practice never send you a bill for a bond issue unless you actually closed the bond issue. So we are working and if it takes, for example, we've worked on the referendum for a year. But we won't bill you until that first series of bonds or bands, I guess in this case, is issued. And I think most firms work that way. The rating agencies are going to want to get paid, but we're not going to go to the rating agencies until we know we're ready to sell bonds.
Got you. Got you. And one thing I noticed is that the bands, if you will, are 10 million less than the actual bond referendum itself. And this is just for adification purposes. What's the rationale behind? I mean, you know, I wouldn't go the full tilt myself, but, you know, just the rationale behind that.
Other than looking for people to help me proofread my documents, and y'all do a great job on that, when you do a bond anticipation note or band, ladies and gentlemen, that's a short-term loan. It's a year or less. And state law lets you do that. And the reason you do it, you typically do it at the beginning of a project. There are also some calendar and tax cycle issues that go into this. But long story short, if we issued all of what's authorized in the referendum as bands, you wouldn't have any money to pay interest on those bands.
Got you.
So we're setting that aside to pay interest on the bands.
Got you. Makes sense.
Any other questions, Board? Okay, thank you, Mr. DeBose. And Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Theo. Next, I'd like to introduce Mike Gallagher. He is the district's financial advisor and he works with Compass Municipal Advisors and they represent many school districts across the state. So we appreciate all that Theo and Mike do for the district. I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thanks, John. Madam Chair, Dr. Little, ladies and gentlemen of the board, it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Just a very high-level overview of what we see. We've taken the construction draw schedule that your staff has put together of the planned spend. And from what we've seen now, it's broken down into a series of two bond anticipation notes. One would be a short-term bond anticipation note in the amount of $85 million to be issued in about March or April of this year to fund your program. It would come due in September. Part of the reason for that is, we're going to term a portion of that out at that point in time with 137.5 million. in time with $137.5 million. We're also going to come back in and borrow about another $137.5 in the fall of this year to fund, because you've got about $190 million of construction needs that are showing to be due between November of 2019 and November of 2020. We'd follow it up, take out the 19B bond anticipation notes in 2020 in an amount of $169.5 million. And then we'd follow up in '20 and '21 with two smaller bond issues of $46 million and $12 million. So what we do is, we broke it down into small chunks to be able to meet the construction needs of the district. Now, you're not locked and set in stone on any of these amounts. As your projects change, if they are going a little bit faster, we may have to add a little bit more money. If they're going slower, we're gonna pull back, and we're not gonna borrow unless we have to because of those inefficiencies in the market. But we do feel it's important to go ahead and lock in some of those dollars this year. We're still at very attractive rates, as evidenced by your sale that closed earlier this week or late last week. Y'all had 14 bidders. It's a testament to the high credit quality of this district. So if you've got any questions on the program, I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. Board, do you have any questions for Mr. Gallagher? Any comments, Board?
What's the impact of other school districts who are also entering into, say, a bond issuance? What does that do, if anything, to our interest rates? Are we far enough apart that it doesn't impact?
Given the high credit quality of this district, the amount of appetite and demand, I think you're in a good position. I've seen South Carolina paper. There's good appetites for it. We sold a deal today for York County. It had almost 20 bidders. I'm selling a deal similar to your refunding tomorrow for Fort Mill School District. I've got 10 bidders signed up on that. So I really don't think it's a competitive thing with the amount of referendum debt coming out of South Carolina. South Carolina paper sells very well in the market and is very sought after.
And the ceiling on that is 7%? Is that correct, on the interest rate? Yeah, yeah. Hey, I like the floor and the ceiling, and let's get towards the floor.
We like floors, the lower the better. But we cannot allow your superintendent to accept a bid on a referendum bond issuance if the interest rate is over 7% without approval by the board. Now, I've seen those rates in my practice. They're not there now, but things can change. And this program is over four and a half years. It's not this week. So that is a failsafe, that if interest rates really get out of hand, the administration needs to come back to you folks and get your input again. So that's why that's there.
And is there an average interest rate that we? Can you speak to that as to an average interest rate that we would see?
Well, Mike, what would you see on a 25-year bond issue?
I was just looking at your refunding that you did that closed on the first. It was a 15-year transaction, and it had 2.74%. Saw one the other day that was a little over three, three and a quarter. So it really depends on where the market is at that day in time.
To lessen mortgage rates right now.
Because of tax exemption.
Yeah, yeah, taxes. Thank you.
Any other questions, Board? Okay. Now we'll get the motion on the floor. Do I hear a motion to approve a resolution approving the issuance of referendum bonds as presented?
Madam Chair, I move the board accept the administration's request to authorize the issuance of all bonds approved in the 2018 referendum, as well as any bond anticipation notes deemed necessary by the superintendent.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Board, are there any additional questions, comments, discussion before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of approving the issuance of referendum bonds as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. And thank you, Mr. DeBose, and thank you, Mr. Gallagher. We truly appreciate what you do for us, and always we appreciate when you're able to renegotiate and get us some better interest rates and get some money back. We always like that. I know. Keep, stay on the lookout. We're now gonna go to 8.2, which is student travel request. And this is, Board, this was in your packet from Dr. Tally. Do I hear a motion to approve 11 student travel requests as presented by Dr. Tally?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the 11 student travel requests as presented by administration.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Are there any questions or comments regarding these student travel requests? Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
Ms. Smith, can I just add? I always like to look at our travel requests because they just capture all the things, the opportunities that our students have. I mean, among these 11 requests, we've got archery and HOSA and Model UN and sports and leaderships. I really think that it's always a great way to kind of hone in on just what our students are doing and accomplishing.
That's great. So all in favor of the motion as presented by Dr. Tally, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. At this time, we'll go to Item 9.0, which is, this is not an action item, Board. This is just a report from the superintendent, and I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Little.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just have a very brief update tonight. I just wanted to remind the board that a month or so ago, we had a teacher from Lexington Middle School come and present to us about our interest in passing a resolution that demonstrates support for our teachers and their work towards greater pay raises. And I just wanted to let you know that we will hopefully have a resolution draft for you to take a look at for our February 19th board meeting. So if you are receiving any other questions or comments or concerns about that, we're gonna have something for you to look at and to comment on and to direct for that as well. So that should be coming just within the next couple of weeks. Outside of that, I'm gonna, I think we've hit some pretty heavy-duty topics tonight. I do wanna say one other thing. You know, one of my favorite hats that I get to wear during the course of the week is I get to be a dad as well as a superintendent. And Ms. Green, you mentioned just a moment ago the idea of the types and opportunities that our children have in Lexington 1, and I wanted to reiterate that. Every time I speak to people about what my children are doing, they are really blown away about what they can do and accomplish in Lexington, and I'm thrilled as well. And the immersion conversation is always very close and near and dear to my house as well, but we do the Spanish version of that. And just a wonderful, wonderful opportunities each and every day in this school district. Today, I was able to tour Whitenow High School and to see what our children are able to do during the course of a day. And they just call it Tuesday. I mean, it's not, you know, something special because people are walking around. It's really an opportunity to stretch themselves. I talked to kids today who were thrilled about the production classes at Whitenow High School. They're doing lots of banner making. They were doing signs for River Bluff High School. They actually have an order on their wall for me. I'm gonna put "Empower Each Child to Design the Future" on my door as you walk in. I'm gonna have them do a job for that. And just amazing stuff. And I think it is an opportunity sometimes to sit back and reflect. We deal with lots of issues, I think, in the leadership of this school district, but we have so many wonderful opportunities for our children. It just, I just felt led to say that as part of my superintendent's report. So having said that, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Smith and, or Ms. Smith and Ms. Ann Marie Green about their trip to Washington, DC. They recently attended the National School Boards Association Advocacy Conference, and that's one of the opportunities that our board takes advantage of. So I'd just like to turn it over to the two of you.
So Ms. Smith and I have mentioned before, the advocacy conference in DC is an exhausting and incredible few days in Washington. They spend the first couple of days filling us up to here with information. And then on Tuesday morning, Ms. Smith and I were on a bus heading 7:15 over to the Capitol and spent about eight and a half hours walking around the halls of Congress, talking to our state delegation. I think we got to see everybody except Congressman Rice, I believe. And we always have some talking points and some priorities. And those change a little bit from year to year. But one of the significant ones that we've been talking about for a number of years that the National School Board Association has really pushed to the front this year is IDEA reauthorization and funding. As you probably know, IDEA was first passed in 1977, I believe. And as part of that, the federal government promised to fund up to 40% of those costs, and they've never funded over about 18%. I mean, right now, I believe it's about 15%. And one of the talking points that I used when we were going, talking to Congressman Clyburn, Senator Graham, Congressman Wilson, was, you know, because on the day that we were there, meeting with those folks, the teachers here in South Carolina, many of them had taken the day off to go to the State House and talk to our state legislators about teacher pay. And I mentioned that, and I said, you know, they're talking about teacher pay, and that is so important. And teacher pay is not necessarily a federal issue. However, if the federal government covered their obligation, the unfunded mandate that is currently IDEA, for our district, that would free up $6.5 million in local funds that we could use for teacher pay. And so it really does have an impact on us when we get those unfunded mandates, whether it's at the federal level or at the state level, because everything that they send us that they don't also give us the funds for, our local dollars have to cover that. We don't get excused from the requirement just because they don't send us the money for it. And so that was a real great opportunity that day to talk about that and how important it is for them. And there really is, I think, some motivation this year. Senator Lamar Alexander from Tennessee spoke, and he is really working on some education funding and full funding for IDEA. And Senator Graham, when we met with him, he said, "Well, Lamar Alexander, I'm going along with whatever he says." So there does seem to be some appetite for fixing that right now. And then just one other thing, and I'll turn it back over to Ms. Smith. Something that's coming very soon is the 2020 census. And we had a number of conversations about the importance of counting every child and how much undercounting certain pockets of our population affects our funding and our programs, because those census calculations follow us for 10 years, and they determine so much of what will happen as far as our funding and our programming for 10 years. So it is really, really just something that local school districts are supposed to really get involved in and embrace. And if you have the opportunity to volunteer or help with a complete count committee, do that, because we do have some areas where, and a lot of it, there's some concern with count suppression because of some recent concerns about the census question, about citizenship, and how that might lead people to not fill out their questionnaires, or the complex homes where you might have grandparents raising children, but then the aunt moved in, and they're not sure who they're supposed to include. So if you have the opportunity in your schools and in your areas to just talk to families about how important it is that they fill out the census, because it really does have a direct impact on what we can do here in our school district.
One of the areas that they said is traditionally undercounted, it has been for years, our children under five years of age. Well, imagine all of our children, if they don't get counted, that is just dollars that do not come to us. So it's very important for us to stress to these families, everybody in your house needs to be counted. And I thought that was really interesting, because to me, three- and four-year-olds are so much work, you would not forget them. But I don't know how they don't get counted, but they don't. The one thing, we try real hard not to go up to the Hill, and I call it gimme-gimme, because I don't like to be approached like that. I like for people to acknowledge the things we're doing well and then do gimme-gimme. And the one thing, last year, they did pass the Big Career and Technology Education Bill, so we let them know that we really appreciated that, because that has a direct impact on our students. The other thing that we really, it'll be carved on my tombstone, because they have all heard me say it every single time I go up there. They're always talking about doing infrastructure bills. And so we always are asking for zero-interest bonds, because that saves our constituents millions of dollars. We used some, I believe, when we built the River Bluff or Meadow Glen, one of those two schools, and-
Meadow Glen School. We actually used them for a number of different projects. There was actually two sets, the Build America Bonds, and then the QSCAB Bonds that were part of the stimulus project, so.
And after hearing about bonds tonight, you can imagine, if we can get a 0% interest rate, how wonderful that would be. So everywhere I go, I always bring that up, because with us being in such massive building programs, it's a direct benefit for Lexington 1. The other thing we talked extensively about, as Ms. Green talked about, are the students with differing abilities. And just really kind of honed in on our legislators. They know, you know, we accept every child that comes to our doorstep, but when they hear stories and they know exactly what we're doing for them, and this isn't one of our stories, but it's one of Lexington 3's stories, and I had to share it with you. They had a child that was in a wheelchair who had zero communication, but they knew the child was really bright. They worked with some of their Title I funds. They got the child an iPad. All of a sudden, his world completely opened up, and he's now a student at Midlands Tech. Now, when you walk into Joe Wilson's office and you tell that story, it really brings home what those dollars do for our students. So we were really trying to work on the IDEA funds and getting more money for our students. And last but not least, I'm gonna get a little political. Mrs. Betsy DeVos was one of our key speakers, and she's not very complimentary of public schools. I'm just gonna, I think she'll tell you that. She's not very complimentary of public schools. But she listed all the things she thinks we need to be doing. She, that was a part of her speech. It was kind of a whole list of, "If you did this, if you did this, if you did this, if you did this." And I am proud to say Lexington 1 was doing every single thing that was on her list. I just wish she'd throw us a bone occasionally and say, "We know some of you are doing these things." So that was very, very positive. At least it was for me, very affirming. She, just FYI, she's been in a horrific bicycle accident, and she's in a wheelchair right now. So they actually wheeled her in, and so you kind of did feel sorry for her, because she was in pretty bad shape. Anyway, I'm gonna get unpolitical now, but we want to thank you for allowing me and Ms. Green to represent Lexington 1 and to go up to the Hill. I was once again asked to lead the group to Congressman Wilson's office. And Anne Marie is just terrific. I tell you, I can't say enough about her knowledge and what a wonderful job she's doing as our advocate for Lexington 1. So thank you again for letting us go and represent you.
All right. That concludes my report.
Great. And Board, Items 10.0 are items for Board information. That's for information only. 11.0 is adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. All in favor, please stand up, and this is unanimous. Thank you.